Ready?
Yes.
Go. I'd like to call the Delaware County Commissioners Meeting to order. It is Monday, August 2nd, 2021. The time is 9:01. If everybody could please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Steve, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Henry.
Here.
Ms. Reagan.
Present.
Kane.
Here.
Mr. Brooks.
Here.
First up, we have appointments. We have three appointments to the Civic Center Authority Board. Rosa Selvi, Scott Alexander, and Brian Smith have shared interest in being appointed to that board. What would the...
I'll make a motion. We approve the appointments.
Second.
Have a motion of second. Steve, can you call the roll, please?
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. Kane.
Yes. Next, we have the Muncie Public Library Board. Ms. Denise King would like to be reappointed.
I think she's a new appointment.
Is she a new appointment?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Have a motion of second. Steve, can you call the roll?
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Kane.
Yes. Next, we have Maintenance Supervisor Position. I hate to say it, but Charlie's going to be believing us. Last day.
Friday.
Friday's your last day. Hate to see you go, Charlie.
I just want, you know, Charlie's done an outstanding job for us. And, you know, when we got rid of a position, Charlie stepped up and took both. He took all the buildings on. And he's done an outstanding job and day and night. Works all the time. Charlie, I appreciate all you've done for the county. So, thank you very much.
Charlie, how many years you got in? Twenty-six?
In the past two years, he's been running three buildings. He's put a lot of miles on his truck that we provide for you.
Well, not only, I mean, he's...
Just a lot of... It's our truck, but you've put a...
The fairgrounds, I mean, Charlie's stepped up and done things to help everybody in the county. So, I just, I really appreciate you, Charlie.
Yep. Thanks, Charlie.
His going away celebration will be this Friday from 11:00 to 1:00 out on the Plaza.
Well, thank you, Charlie.
Just a regular crown or the peach crown or the apple crown or... Okay. I believe the name that is Stephen Foster is Pam here?
Yes. Steve Foster.
Steve Foster?
I'll make a motion. We appoint Steve Foster to the Maintenance Supervisor Position.
Second.
Have a motion of second. Steve, can you call the roll, please?
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. Kane.
Yes. I just was going to have Pam come up, how we went through the interview process and everything. And you did have one guy that came... Yeah.
Okay, we did have four, four or five applicants. And Shannon and Barry and myself interviewed. And two of them were... Now my arm's talking. Anyway, we had two very good, good ones. And when I called Steve Friday, he was ecstatic that he got the job. He has worked at Law Hospital for...
I can't remember, yeah.
Yeah. And he's just ready for a change. Hope he's ready for this change, but we'll see.
Okay, alright.
But no, he's going to be, he's going to be good. And Charlie is going to work with him some this week. Kind of showing him the ropes and stuff.
I just wanted the public to know the process that you guys went through.
Yes.
That you and Mr. Reagan and Henry both sat down and interviewed, so...
The interviews went great. We got some good applicants, but there was a couple of them that really stood out.
Okay. Thanks, Pam.
It was very professional. Thank you.
Next, we have Tabled Business Ordinance Number 2021-025. I'd like to keep this table until our next meeting, if we could.
That's fine. Our next meeting.
Next meeting.
Let me know if you have changes.
We will. Next, we need the approval of the July 19th, 2021 Commissioners Meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion of second for approval. Steve, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Kane.
Yes. Next, we move the contracts or agreements for approval. Thompson Subdivision Platte Approval, Ashton Land Surveyor.
...
Pleasure, the Commissioners.
I make a motion. We approve.
Second.
Have a motion of second. Steve, can you call the roll, please?
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. Kane.
Yes. Next, we have the reject Endot Offer to Repair County Roads on Temporary Easement. John?
Yes, this has been a discussion with the Highway Department and the county over a unofficial detour when there was work up on 28, I believe it was. And the county estimates were three times what Endot offered to pay. So, we need to go through the formal process. I'll send a letter, if you approve it, I'll send a letter to Endot that we're rejecting that and making a demand for the amount of the, what the actual costs were that the county incurred for repairing those roads.
I believe, Tommy, that was, that was over $300,000 was our estimate. And Endot offered us $50,000. So, I make a motion. We reject that Endot offer.
Second.
Have a motion of second. Steve, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Kane.
Yes. We'll move to ordinances for first reading. Ordinance Number 2021-026. Ordinance to Limit Weight and Commercial Truck Traffic on County Roads in Delaware County, Indiana. John?
This is an ordinance at the request of the Commissioners that was prepared to address that situation involving those trucks that are diverted off of the state highways because of Endot detours. So, I put together a draft to limit the trucks using our county roads. Our county roads can't handle constant, you know, semi-traffic. Time in and time out. Tommy Humbert brought up some, some interesting questions for me to take a look at. So, if you just want to introduce this, I'm sorry, introduce this, then we can work on it and then maybe make some changes, but at least get it out there for discussion.
Okay.
I'll make a motion. We introduce Ordinance Number 2021-026.
Second.
Have a motion of second. Steve, can you call the roll, please?
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. Kane.
Yes. Next, we have Resolutions for Approval. Resolution Number 2021-031. A Resolution Rescinding Delaware County Public Safety Employees Handbook, Highway Bridge Engineering Employee Manual.
This is a resolution. The Highway Department, after the transition from the union contract to a non-union contract, the Highway Department had its own handbook for a while. In working with Pam and talking with Pam McCammon, it became really difficult to look at the handbook because there, some of their rules were separate from what the county rules were and their discipline wasn't the same as the county. So, for consistency, I'm recommending that the Commissioners do away with that handbook and just use the county handbook.
I make a motion. We approve the resolution.
Second.
Have a motion of second. Steve, can you call the roll, please?
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. Kane.
Yes. Next, we'll move to Department Heads and Elected Officials.
Paul Singleton, 911 Director. Several months ago, you authorized us to begin the upgrade, our software upgrade with Tyler. Tyler, does it affect us? It affects the Sheriff's Department, jail, city police, the mobile unit setup, all the small town use. I'm making a recommendation that we put off our go-live. We're scheduled to go live third week of October. I've lost three more people in the last 10 days. Jail short is going to affect them. Sheriff's Department short will affect them. City Police is short. So, I recommend that we put this off until the, as soon as they can get a schedule again. Wasn't aggressive scheduled to begin. I've had to pull my trainer and my IDEX person somewhat to help on the floor on day shift. They're part of the bill. So, I think it's just wise that we put this off. My suggestion is that we go ahead and finish the bill out process. Talk to Jim Flute. Obviously, he would like to see it done, but he's in agreement with me. Go ahead and finish out our bill. And that will give us a lot more time to test the manpower issues. All the agencies come back up. That would be nice.
I agree with Paul. I think because of the manpower shortage, we hold off on that because it'll affect every, almost every emergency services department in the county, so...
And this is going to a completely upgraded software. We're going from what's called a .NET software up to is a completely different platform. And I just think we're wise, especially on testing. It'll give us time to test.
I'm good.
I am too. I hold off.
Yeah, just hold off on it.
And then I'll notify them this morning. I haven't canceled our date yet. For that I have permission to do that. So, I will call them today. Hopefully, October day.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, Tommy Humbert, Delaware County Highway Department. Bobby Doherty here. We have some issues on 300 South and State Route 35. There's been several accidents. We continue to have more accidents. We're going to work on the signage. A lot of stuff that we want to work on here, we want you Commissioners to maybe help us out with this. Thinking about digging over a road bed out, bring that road down, then blending that back into the... There's also some other roads, like 350 South, that is not as heavily traveled. I think a lot of this problem of what's happening out there has to do with the meter closing on the bypass. And I think we're going to see damage to the... So, Bobby, Bobby's worked on stuff. I'll let Bobby tell you kind of what he's doing with the double signage. We're going to put signs on each side, warning signs up ahead. We're going to put some lights. I'll let him tell you kind of what size he's doing for crumbles, drifts. But I may need help with Endot. Because Endot, their stop sign actually says, it's a pretty small signage. It's on one side. I don't know if I can request them. We need a double. We need a double sign, double stop sign with some kind of a light on it or a flashing light. I don't know if I can get it pulled out. I'm going to go talk to him when I leave here. But this is a dangerous intersection. I was in an accident yesterday, a three-car accident where an out-of-town person did not yield. Came over the road. They didn't know a highway was there. So, luckily, the person that was coming and was actually heading southbound swerved and missed them and actually hit somebody on the other side of the road. So, all three were involved and nobody was hurt, but really a bad design. It was a road that was there, you know, with 35. This is a bad design that we need to fix because I may need you guys to talk. If I get injured in Endot, I'm not cooperating.
Who do we talk to at Cardinal Greenway? Does anyone have any idea?
Me and Angie Poole.
Okay.
You'll cooperate.
I'll let Bobby tell you what we're doing with the signage and what size and everything real quick. Like I said, Endot, I may need to talk to Endot because I don't think anybody from Endot here is going to, you know, maybe help me real easy, but we'll see what happens.
We'll do whatever we can, Tommy.
I'll let Bobby tell you real quick.
Well, Endot drills the stop sign in the intersection right now. We want to go to 36 or 48 inches and put something on the left side that the size even more. We're going to go ahead and put two 36-inch top-ahead signs. Right now, they're 775 feet out. We're going to bring it in 500 feet and then put some at 775 also. Move right, left side just, and then put some flashing beacons on them. Traffic coming up, no sun.
Okay.
Beacon on there, stop sign. Some reason right now, I know cutlassing is just...
You're talking about both sides of 300 South and 35 or just the east side?
Well, yeah, we're going to go on the west side and put a stop head up there. And then on the east side, we're going to put some on the north and south of that so that there's a sign on the left-hand side of the road and the right-hand side of the road. So, it'll be more visible. Hopefully, bring attention, maybe less accidents.
Mostly the westbound traffic there coming. Starting here.
There is some issues on the other side also. There is some issues of people. But I'm going to stay in contact with you guys. We're going to keep an eye on this road because I don't think this road is going to hold up. We don't have many shoulder anyway. I'd say something to Shannon about it. I think eventually we may have to purchase some, some kind of a right-way there. Put some kind of drainage in there where we can right widen that road because that road is not meant for semis to go up. And that's why we're getting out, getting a lot of semis.
How wide is that new bridge we put in?
It's wide enough. I don't know off the top of my head. Now, it's wide enough where if the road is widened, we'll be fine.
Good.
We always make sure we put everything back in, bridge or culvert-wise. So, if we ever do go in and widen it up, it's wide enough, so... But that's just kind of a, we'll keep you guys posted on what's going on. But, I mean, yesterday, the accident yesterday was horrible and it would have been worse, you know. The undertaking was really serious. We've been working on this for a while now. People, the strangers there that's on that road that does not... Like I said, Endot sign is too small. Definitely too small.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate you working on that.
Alright, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thanks for listening.
I have a quick update. So, our total was 459. I had 96 volunteers. I helped a lot. Project submitted 1007.
Good, I'm sorry. Could you speak up a little bit? I can't hear you over here.
And then our state care project, we had 131. Those went down on the side.
Thank you for the good report.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Just real quick, I want to say something. Megan Cutino is the Administrator for EMS. Wave, Megan. And she's also an EMT and she's worked a couple shifts here. She's come out of the office and actually worked a truck, worked a couple shifts. I just, that's the kind of people we got working at EMS and I appreciate you guys.
Anyone else? I'd like to say a couple things. I've got a few phone calls, a few letters. I support every law enforcement officer, every public safety officer for raises. As a public safety officer myself, sometimes we have to go out and work two, three jobs to support our families and to do other things. I give 100% behind my brothers and sisters in law enforcement. And yes, I do think that they, we're all underpaid and we all need more money. But it's all of us in public safety. The respect that we used to have from people, it's not there anymore. Number one, we need to get that respect back. I watched a little bit of the council meeting and one of the things that was brought up was art money. Art money cannot be used to give raises. Art money is not to be used in ways how we can give raises. Any public official should read the 151 pages and it tells you in there what the money can be used for and what the money can't be used for. So, to have a public official get up and say, "We need to be creative with these funds." We can't be creative with these funds because I don't want to go to jail. And that's not the way we do things here at the county. They're used for certain things. That's all we can use them for. Now, there is the CARES Act money that you can use it for certain things also. But the art money cannot be used for raises. I want everybody to understand that. And I want our attorneys speak on this, but John, I am right. It can't be used for raises.
Correct.
There are certain things that we can use them for, but we can't be creative either to give raises.
Plus, you can be creative only to have to pay it back.
Right.
So, there's no sense in being creative to, if you don't want to pay it back. So, yeah, you can't use it for raises. You can't use it for personnel. You can't use it for retirement. You could use it for COVID-related and you can use it for infrastructure, water, sewer, broadband, and stormwater on infrastructure.
Now, things that we have been doing as county commissioners as we've been trying to bring more revenue back to our community to build our tax base back up. We built our tax base back up. That will bring more tax dollars in. That can help us keep the public safety officers that we need here and we'll be able to generate the money doing this. Brad, I know we are like raising the taxes in the county area and I know the city's actually starting to drop. Can you explain a little bit of that for me, please?
Yeah, sure. Thank you. Brad Bookout, Director of Economic Development. County outside of the city limits of Muncie. Blue City is down by the city limits. In large part, some of the creative work that you all have done. It's a problem back on the back toll tracks and investment in some of the taken and into some of the... In addition to that, a lot of housing in the county areas. That's also passed for years.
Thanks, Brad. But on another note, Commissioners, we do not give raises. It's not up to us. We are not the fiscal body and want everybody to understand that too. We don't give the raises out. We try to create a tax base to where eventually the council can do something to help them out. But our correctional staff, yes, I do believe those guys need a raise. I worked in the jail and they need whatever the council can give them. Plus, I know a lot of people, you know, there's money generated from also out-of-county inmates, but people also have to remember all that money also has to be used for food and other things within that jail. Chief Deputy Stanley, am I correct on that? So, not all of those funds you guys could actually use for raises.
Yeah, the... Chief Stanley, Chief Deputy Sheriff's Office. The monies that we can get from out-of-count... We have around 18 or so. That money, yes. The Sheriff's Office is trying to come up with solutions. That with every council member.
Okay. I just, you know, if everybody can work together on this, I think we can get some stuff done. But get people where they need to be. It could be a three, four-year process. But I support these guys in getting a raise. I support all the public safety people getting more money or the frontline people and deserve it. So, I just want everybody to know theirs where my support lies. Do I have anything else?
Well, it was sad to read that report that the sheriff gave us that Little Wells County, north of us, was paying more than we were. But it is what it is right now. But we hope that all of you can come together because I agree with you. We want to keep our good law enforcement and public servants safe and paid what they deserve.
I think too, when the city gave raises to city officers, they had five positions that they reduced. And honestly, I don't think we can afford to reduce five positions. So, nothing else. We'll move to payment of claims in an amount of $4,106,986.97.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion of second. Steve, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Kane.
Yes. Then he left me. Next, we have Public Comments, Questions, Other Business, Discussion. Okay. Hopefully, I get the name right. Akayla?
I think she was here for the library.
Oh, she left? Okay.
I'll see her out there.
John, do you have anything on the, on the Facebook Live or the email?
There was a question about the art plan and I said it's still in the works. We're still working on it. I'm making some adjustments to it and we'll get it to Commissioners to review.
And one thing on the art plan, we want to make sure ours is right before we come out with it because we don't want to end up and have to pay any of this money. out with it because we don't want to end up and have to pay any of this money back. So, we're not jumping the gun and just rushing out. We want to make sure that it is, it's right because they change this stuff all the time. So, if we don't have anything else, I'll entertain a motion recess.
So move.
Second.
Steve, can you call the roll, please?
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.